Hello everyone. Hello everyone, my name is Thomas, Thomas Amiar. I specialize in breathwork and psychology. So today we will speak about all the benefits you can get from breathwork, the different techniques. There are many, many things we can do through the breath. Actually, it's a very holistic technique. You can tap into every layer of the self. You can access the body, you can access your energy, you can access your emotions, you can access the mental and the spiritual. So today we will cut it in two categories, the breathwork for everyday life and the breathwork for healing. So with the breath, you can adapt to every situation. It's something that's very useful to adapt to the situation you're facing in your life, whether you have to get more quiet, you need to get rid of anxiety, you need to pass an exam or a job interview or these kind of things that then you will, you will need to slow down a little bit. At the opposite, if you need to energize, to be more empowered, to have more energy in the morning, you can do other kinds of techniques. You can also balance through the breath like an adaptive tool. If you use the balancing breath, you will be able to get more energy if you're lacking energy. And at the opposite, if you have too much, you will be able to slow down. So to understand how the breath is functioning, let's say first, it's the main system, the main system in your physiology. It's the most important system. If you stop eating, for instance, you will be able to do it for 30 days. It's a long time. If you stop drinking, you will be able to do it for three days. And if you stop breathing, most of us will be able to do it for only three minutes. So that's the system, the more important to stay alive. Because what do you need for living? You need food, water and breathing. But this one is the more important. And it's also the one, the only one we can access to consciously and we can modulate. All the other systems, the heartbeat, digestion, endocrine system, all these systems are fully automatic. You don't have access to these systems. But the breath, you can decide consciously to modulate your breath a way or another. And the magic with the breath is that through this only system, you can access all the others. It's got an influence on all the other systems depending on the pattern you adopt, depending on the depth, depending on the rhythm, the pace, the all around, the way you adapt your breath, you can do different things to different systems. So to understand more about how it acts on the physiology, a key point is to understand the way the nervous system works. We have two different nervous system. We have the sympathetic nervous system, which is the one we call also fight or flight. That's the one that helps you to adapt to a critical situation. For instance, if you are attacked by a tiger or a mammoth or whatever, or ancestors were attacked by, your physiology will suddenly change. Your breath will go faster, more shallow from the upper side of the body. So you can get more oxygen in a very short time to be able to run faster or to fight against the aggression and save your life. So when you breathe faster, shallow from the upper chest, what's happening? Your heartbeat goes faster, you're producing more hormones, more stress hormone that helps you to have the capacity to react like adrenaline, cortisol, all these hormones that are made for action. And you may be able to survive the attack of the lion. So this is the fight or flight, the sympathetic nervous system. At the opposite, there is the parasympathetic nervous system. That's the one doing the opposite. It's the one for rest and digest. So when you're resting, when you observe, for instance, a baby at sleep, it's got a different breathing pattern. He's breathing very slow and very deep, all the way down to the belly. So a baby at sleep is triggering the parasympathetic response. It's the perfect breathing method to relax, to get rid of stress, to be more, yeah, to be in a relaxed state. So if you want to relax, what's interesting is that this works the other way around. When you adapt the pattern of the breath, you can get the effect of this pattern. So if you want to be like a baby at rest, relaxed, quiet and peaceful, you just adapt the breath the same way he does. Meaning you slow down the rhythm, you go deep down to the belly and you will trigger the parasympathetic response. Your heartbeat will slow down, you will produce different kinds of hormones like endorphin or dopamine, which are the pleasure hormone and the painkiller hormone, the one that fights against inflammation. And you will relax as a baby having a knock. And so these techniques have been developed for these reasons, to adapt and to do what you want with your physiology depending on the circumstances you're facing in your everyday life. So there are techniques that are known with names and there are general basic knowledge about the rhythm and the pace. You can learn to know how to adapt your breath. So today we will practice the coffee, whiskey and water breath. I like to call this termination because it's exactly the same effect as when you're having a coffee, when you're having a whiskey or when you're having a glass of water. The water breath is the same as, it's made for balancing. It's like drinking water, you can drink water anytime. It's always good to drink enough water on your daily basis. So the balancing breath is the one that will adapt your physiology to the situation you're facing. If you're not going fast enough, it's going to give you a little bit more energy. And if you're too energized and you want to relax, it's going to relax you. It's the same effect as some plants like ginseng that are adaptive gene, that adapts to the situation of your physiology. So the balancing breath, the water breath is very simple. It's only about first being aware of the way you're breathing. So you stop for a few seconds, you observe yourself and you see how you're breathing. If you are breathing most of the time too shallow and fast, then you slow down, you go deeper. And this balancing breath is around four seconds in minimum and four seconds out with enough depth down to the belly, inhaling fully but quietly and exhaling the same way. So it's balanced on the inhale and the exhale. So we can do it a little bit together just to see how it feels to be conscious of the breath and to adapt. So four seconds in is the minimum. When you practice with time, you can easily reach more length like five seconds, six seconds. More than six seconds is quite a lot, but between four and six is perfect. So let's go first for the inhale. So inhaling through the nose is important. Most of the breathing techniques are through the nose for various reasons. The nose is made for breathing. The mouth is made for eating or speaking. And in the nose, there are many advantages. First, there are air in the nose. So this is made to stop particle from the air and to filter the air you're absorbing. So all the dust and things, most of the time, they stay in the air of the nose. Second, when you're inhaling through the nose, you're warming up the air, the outside air to the temperature of your body before it reach the lungs. So it's more efficient. And third reason, a very important one, when the air pass through the nose and the throat, the back of the throat, you're producing a gas called nitrous oxide. And this gas is really helpful for oxygen assimilation. And the pathway of the oxygen is closest to the brain. So you're oxygenating your brain better. So let's do a little bit of water breath. So inhaling slowly through the nose, down to the belly over four seconds and exhaling same way. Or through the mouth, it doesn't make big difference when you exhale over four seconds also. And then another one. Same for the exhale. So there's no stop between the inhale and the exhale. You're doing a loop. It's like the waves on the shore, it comes and go. There is no stop, there is no hold. It's a very calming practice on itself. Let's keep going a little bit more. After a few rounds, you already feel the effect. And generally speaking, looping on something like we are doing, looping on the breath, on the inhale and the exhale, we are tricking the brain also, the mind. The mind thinks it's doing something, but it's just looping. It's the base of all the meditation techniques, all the mantra repeating techniques from India. It's all about the loops. Same for the music, the hypnotic music or the sacred music. It's about hypnotizing your mind and making it sticking to something, which is just a single loop and a repetitive pattern. So this you can do at any moment. You can do in the underground, you can do at work, you can do in the bus, you can do doing your shopping. You can do in the waiting room when you are about to get job interview. And it's something that trains your body. This is an important dimension of this specific practice is that it's training your body. You will be more and more useful to it and your body, your lungs, you will be more used to this kind of breathing. Because most of the time, when you will stop and think, okay, how am I breathing? You will observe your breathing too shallow, too fast from the upper chest. And doing this practice helps your body to get back to the normal breathing and to learn it. So if you do for long, many times a day, at one point, when you will stop and observe your breathing, you will be closest to the good one until you are fully experienced and fully used to. And every time you stop, you're on the right one. And so this was for the water breath. The whiskey breath is the one to relax deeply, as if you were drinking a whiskey. So in that case, it's better to just breathe. And this is also called the box breathing. So this is an interesting one because it's got two different effects at the same time. It's at the same time relaxing the body. It puts you directly into the parasympathetic system. It triggers its reaction. And also it helps you to focus better. So this one is useful for relaxing at work, to be more efficient when you're working. And it's also used by very efficient groups like special forces when they are into special operations. They do this kind of breathwork before, just before the operation. So they are at the same time relaxed, but deeper aware and focused. You know, because if they would use just a relaxing technique, they would be relaxed, but not as operational and as efficient with this one. So this is a pattern that looks like a square. So some people call it the box, some call it the square. And in a square, you have four sides. So every side you do something, and you're visualizing it also. So when you inhale, you're visualizing the dot going up the vertical of the square. Just one, two, three, four inhaling. Then you hold, one, two, three, four. Then you exhale, one, two, three, four. And you hold again empty, one, two, three, four. Let's go with this rhythm a little bit. One, two, three, four, hold. One, two, three, four. Exhale, one, two, three, four. Hold, one, two, three, four. I let you go again, few more cycles. And one more time, you will notice your mind is focused on something. You're visualizing the dot as your body is doing its own practice. So your mind stops, it's focused on something. While the body is changing its inner chemistry little by little. So you do as many cycle as you need to get the effect you want. If you need only three or four cycle to get relaxed and focus, it's only about three or four cycles. If you need more, you go as long as you need to get the effect you want. It's also something you can do everywhere. You don't have to close your eyes to visualize the square. You can just be at your office in front of the desk or whatever you're doing and just breathe in and visualize the dot going up and then exhale and dot and tuck, tuck, tuck and follow the dot with open eyes. It works perfect. So this one is the whiskey breath. There's a lot of physiology and chemistry changing with the holding and the exhale and the counting and the visualization. There's a lot of science behind breathwork. Today, we don't have time for all this science, but if you want to investigate a bit more on the internet, you will find a lot of interesting things. And then comes the coffee, the coffee breathing. So the coffee breath is made to energize. So as we were just speaking about, it's meant to trigger the sympathetic system, sympathetic nervous system. So you're triggering its response through doing the pattern of the fight and flight mode. So the classic pattern, there's a famous one from India, from pranayama called fire breath. So this one is just about exhaling sharply, very fast with no inhale. You're just exhaling through the nose and the inhale is automatic between the exhale. So it goes like this. You're contracting the upper chest just to push out the air, contracting the belly also. Basically, you contract both belly and chest. And when you listen to the sound, what does it sounds like? It sounds like if you were running, same thing. When you run fast, it goes the same way. And when you run fast, what's happening? Your heartbeat goes faster, your adrenaline runs faster and you're producing more. And your muscles are ready for action. And your mind is more aware and more ready for, yeah, it's waking up. You know, if you're doing it in the morning, for instance, for those who have a difficult wake up and who are in a blurry state for a few minutes before they're completely, they are completely efficient and operational, you can do this kind of breathing and accelerate and boost your system within minutes before you go. There are also many people, they don't really function if they don't have their coffee before starting the day. It's for the same reason, the coffee does the same as the breath is doing. The coffee will act on the level of adrenaline. It will boost some chemistry in your endocrine system with a chemical external add, let's say. And this you can do without any substance, without coffee, without tea, without cigarettes, without anything, just through your own breathing, relying on your own supply. There are other techniques I will just mention, but we will not practice here. For instance, the one for sleeping, we will not do it right now because I have something else to tell you just after. So you can also use the breath for sleeping. So once you understand the pattern, when you understand, if you want to slow down, you need to go deep in the belly and exhale slowly. You can make it even more efficient when exhaling longer than inhaling. The longer you exhale, the more you will slow down your system, the more you will relax your muscle, the more your heartbeat will slow down and the more you will produce hormones that helps for relaxing and for sleeping. And so the simplest is to do twice the time you inhale with the exhale. You do four second inhale or you just inhale normally the way you used to do. And you do twice much for exhale. This is the classic, everybody can remember this one. I just do twice more the exhale and then I will slow down and sleep. And there's another one that incorporate the whole dimension in it. It's a series of number you just memorize, it's four, seven, eight. Once you memorize four, seven, eight, it's easy to remember the way to breath. You just breathe in four seconds gently, deeply down to the belly. When you breathe that deep, you notice the diaphragm is moving up. So and everything is expanding. So it's got a real influence on the diaphragm and this is also triggering the parasympathetic response. So you inhale this four seconds and you hold seven seconds before exhaling on eight seconds slowly, quietly. You can even do it through purse lips if it helps you to go slower. Because sometimes eight seconds is kind of a long time to exhale and you feel you don't have enough oxygen, enough air in the lungs to exhale for so much time. You purse your lips and then it will help the flow to be thinner and you will be able to go longer. So these are simple techniques and you can use it all the time. The best thing to do is to stop at different moments, at least to do the water breath. Just the good, the good balancing breath, the breath we should have all the time. The breath we forgot because when we were kids, we were doing it naturally. When you observe a kid resting, he's breathing perfectly. And getting older with the way we live, with the fast pace of life in the modern society we live in and the stress, the stress we have all day for various reason, it puts us into this shallow upper chest fast breathing, which is triggering an endocrine response. You're producing certain hormones that's stressing you even more. And at the end of the story, you're stressed by the way your breath and the hormones you're producing. And for no external reason, you're stressing yourself on your own. So stopping regularly, observing the breath and adapting is the basic. Yeah, so this is for the breath you can do for everyday life. And there are other techniques. The second part of this speech is about the way you can use the breath for healing. So the breath is something that's existing in all the cultures around the world from the birth of humanity. There are different names to speak about the breath. In India, it's called prana. So the pranayama is all the science and the techniques around the breath. In China, it's called qi. The qi is the energy. The disciplines like qigong or tai chi, it's all about mastering the energy, the energy of the breath. It's the life force. If you are interested in the West, the Western culture, it's called vitalis. It comes from the Latin and it means the same. It means life force. It's another name for the breath. And in every tradition, everywhere in the world, the breath is known to be the main source of energy and to have fantastic powers, not only on your physiology, not only on your emotions, on your energy, but also on the mental and on the spiritual level. So a lot of mystic traditions are using different breathing techniques, sometimes kept very secret for very long to access an expanded state of consciousness and get closer to the divine and have these spiritual experiences. This in every religion, you find this. The main Buddhist technique is, the main Buddhist meditation is the breath focus meditation. So you're just focusing on a single thing, that's your breath. And focusing on the breath, it's the water breath, same thing as the Buddhist tradition. In the Sufi tradition, so this is the mystic branch of Islam, they are using also breathwork that is linked to a sound you're producing. When you're producing that sound breathing, you're producing much more nitrous oxide, what we were speaking about previously. So it makes the oxygen more efficient in your system and it triggers more chemical reaction and the brain enter a different state. And you're entering a kind of trance state that gives you access to a different rhythm. Even the Christian chanting or the Jewish chanting is a special breathing techniques. If you want to chant that way, you have to breathe a certain way to be able to sustain the chanting. And after 10 minutes of chanting this way, you're changing in your physiology and your mind is expanding, your consciousness is expanding. And so this is something known from the birth of humanity. And recently, the science and the psychology and the psychiatry got really interested in these practices to access different layers of the mind we don't have access to usually. It's mostly about speaking about the subconscious. Because in the mind, there are things you are conscious of and those who are not conscious of. These ones are stored in the subconscious. It's for a reason, the subconscious is a kind of buffer that's there to take in charge all the things that are too heavy or too emotionally destabilizing, too intense. And so you couldn't face it in your everyday life. If you have a big trauma, if you have a car crash or if you are physically or sexually abused or if whatever very intense is happening to you, most of the time, you will store it in the subconscious so you're able to keep going. Uh, most of the time, you will store it in the subconscious, so you're able to keep going. Uh, it's also where you store the, yeah, the childhood trauma, the childhood, uh, problem you had. Uh, when you, you, you felt rejected, when you feel loneliness, when you, uh, all these problems, you put it in the subconscious. So you keep going, but the subconscious is not meant to store things indefinitely. Uh, it's meant to store it for a while until you process it. And you make it conscious again and you get rid of it. So, uh, if you don't, uh, let's say the, the memory is not stored chronologically. The memory is stored by categories of emotions, it's like boxes. You have a box for, for joy, a box for sadness, a box for, uh, uh, fear, uh, whatever. And if you experience too much of the same emotion, you will fill the box too much. And at one point, the lid starts to open because there's no more space in the box. And it opens and lets some material diffuse in the conscious. And this material is there to make you notice, okay, there is a big problem that takes too much space. And you need to clear it out, you need to face it and to process it. So this is, um, what we call in psychology, this leads to, uh, compulsive repetitive behavior. You're repeating the same behavior, you're in a loop in your life and you're facing again and again the same problem. Uh, for instance, you may meet always the same kind of wrong partner. You know, uh, it's always the same type of boyfriend, uh, uh, this psychology, this way of doing. And every time you break up and you find another one, boom, it's exactly the same. Uh, because your subconscious is diffusing, okay, you have to clear this problem. Uh, and making it conscious, most of the time it's linked to the father or the mother, uh, and, and the. And as long as you, you, you're storing these things, you're in a way re-traumatizing yourself layer after layer. Uh, instead of opening wide, facing the problem. And, uh, and getting rid of it and the consequences on your behavior. So there are techniques, uh, developed by, uh, psychologists, uh, around the breath. That puts you with a certain breathing pattern with a certain context. Uh, with also a sensory deprivation, uh, in a way, like you, you're laying down, uh, on the mat. Blindfolded, so you don't have to deal with your body, the sensation of the body, uh, is different, you don't see anymore. So your, uh, visual sensations, most of the time are rewired to the ears. But your ears are immersed into music and sound with a special, uh, special mix. With different kind of energy, emotions, uh, triggering different reactions. So if you combine all of this, uh, there's a famous technique, I've been trained to call the holotropic breath work. Uh, developed by Stan Grof, uh, one of the, the last still alive famous psychologists. Who developed the force wave in psychology after, after Freud, after Pavlov, after Maslow. Uh, the force wave called transpersonal psychology. And so, uh, yeah, so I'm practicing this technique, I, I, I. I call now trans, transcendental breath work because I changed few things in it. And, and this transcendental breath work helps you to access the subconscious. So you can open the box widely and make the, this material emerge. And get, get out in the conscious realm and process it. So you don't have to, uh, you don't have the bad influence anymore. Because you will be entering a kind of dreamlike state. That's very interesting for psychology because your mind is split. You're not functioning the same way, it's, we call it non-ordinary state of consciousness. Because it's a different state where the, the conscious and the unconscious works together. And you're able to come back to a past trauma. Uh, and at the same time, observing it with a distance. So you're not overwhelmed by what's happening and what you come back to. For instance, if you were, uh, bullied at school, uh, when you were seven years old, uh. You will have, uh, uh, potentially less self-confidence. You will not be very good at, uh, uh, socializing with groups because you're afraid of groups, they were bullying you. Um, same thing in your, uh, social life, uh. Uh, you will have more difficulties to find a partner. Because if you don't go out, if you don't socialize, you don't find a partner behind your bed, under your bed. Most of the time it doesn't work. Um, and, uh, and yeah, many things like this. And if entering a different state of consciousness, you were able to come back to that moment. Which is also very often forgotten. Uh, you will realize, oh, yes, that's what happened. I was seven years old at school and these other kids were just, uh, making fun of me and, uh. And, uh, shaming me and, uh, and, uh, I felt it very, very bad, but actually it was just kids playing. Okay, it was not very smart games, but it was just kids playing. So why would I adapt my life around this story? Why do I, I am so ashamed, why am I so, uh, scared of people, why am I staying on my own? Uh, because of this story, it doesn't make sense at all. And once it's conscious, because you've opened that box and everything is out now. Uh, you change your behavior in a click. The day after, you think it's, it makes no sense to keep going that way and you change everything and your life changed. Without doing nothing. So, um, so these breathing techniques, uh, are very useful for, for psychology. Uh, when I was working as a psychotherapist, uh, sometimes speech therapy is not enough. You, you're speaking to people, but if they have no clue about what happened, because it's completely unconscious. Uh, they will not tell you. So you can take months working with the same person, trying to get access to this material. And instead of that, after a while, I used to propose them to go into a transcendental breath work workshop. Where they would do this breathing in a special context, very secure, very comfortable with music, it's a journey also. And get access to that material. And once you have access to that material. If you want to process it again a bit more and to work on it, then it's easy to go into a speech therapy. So, um, yeah, this is all about, uh, accessing these realms we don't access to like subconscious. And there's also another realm you can access, uh, through these breathing techniques. It's the spiritual realm. So what we were speaking about, uh, in the different mystic traditions. You can access deep spiritual experiences, uh, that are life-changing experiences. Cause once you experience, uh, consciousness expansion, when you go beyond your limits. Uh, because usually there is you and the rest of the world. Uh, and for first time, you will expand and connect to the, to the world around you. Uh, becoming wider, uh, feeling, uh, what is surrounding you as if it was you a little bit, um, or completely. Uh, if you're in the forest, you may feel nature much stronger. Uh, you may feel the trees like breathing with you. Um, this kind of sensation is completely shifting your perception of reality. Uh, because if we go into quantum physics, uh, we understand everything is conscious. Everything, mineral, vegetal, uh, animal, uh, the planets, the cosmos, everything is conscious. Consciousness comes first, then matter happens. So, uh, you can reach these states, you can also experience unconditional love. Uh, the, the love that's described in all the religious books. Um, and, and till you experience it yourself, there's no way you understand what it is. Because these are things that are beyond worlds, beyond explanations. So it can be also a very life-changing experience to, to get this kind of spiritual realizations. And, yeah, so I think we made a kind of round around all this, this topics. And so the breath is, is a magic tool in a way. I like to call it the magic tool, because it works for everything, everything, from your everyday life or relaxing, uh, uh. Energizing, accessing some layers of yourself you don't have access to. Uh, you can also improve your physiology dramatically. Uh, there are some specialists, uh, that use breath work for, uh, for performance. And there's one of the session I'm giving at the Balance Health called Performance Breath Work. So with this, you will learn how to boost your physiology day after day. And become, uh, more performant in sport, more performant at job, performant at everything. Uh, just using these, these techniques. Um, there's a man that's famous for owning twenty-four records, world records. Uh, for a cold exposure and is able to expose himself, uh, to the cold. Uh, diving in the North Pole for two hours. Because he trained with certain breathing techniques, day after day, breathing techniques plus gradual cold exposure. And, uh, and at the end is able to do it for two hours. Uh, you and me would die within five minutes, let's say five minutes, we enter into hypothermia and fifteen minutes later we're dead. So, um, you can really do magic, uh, with, with the breath. So, um, yes, I will be in Hong Kong, uh, for two weeks. So, uh, uh, those who want to register at Balance Health, uh, for one-on-one sessions. Uh, you're welcome to do, I will also be running, uh, a few workshops, few, few transcendental breath work workshops. Uh, you can reach me on Instagram with my name, Tomas Amiar. Uh, or on the internet, uh, at mindfulbreathwork.com. And, um, I'm looking forward to meet you and to making you discover these, uh, amazing practices. Bye-bye. If you have questions, uh, you're welcome.
We have one question from, um, Shira, if I may speak, um, that question, Thomas. So the question is, will this breath work also help in strengthening her lungs? Especially now with post long COVID.
Yes, uh, it's got, of course, it's got, uh, positive influence on lungs. Um, with these techniques, you can, um, improve your lungs capacity. Uh, it's, uh, mostly about being able to get more, uh, volume, you can access more volume. Uh, and, and expand your lungs, so, uh, your breathing is, is more efficient with a less effort. And you're also able to, uh, get access to more oxygen, uh, within a shorter time. And generally speaking, uh, uh, yeah, yeah, improving your lung capacity is, is improving all your systems. You know, it's a, it's a kind of chain reaction and it's improving everything around. Um, yes, you, 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 for, for COVID, it's, it can, it can be a very, very useful to, uh, to practice these things.
Thank you for that, um, yeah, thank you for that question, Shira. So, um, if you have more question and if we're not able to answer during this discussion, you could. Um, send us a message over a P P P email, um, we will be flashing it on screen. You can also follow us in our social accounts, Balance Health Wellness Center, um, Facebook and then in our email. Thank you so much, Thomas, and if you want to, uh, dive deeper into breath work. We can definitely, um, have and arrange a one-on-one session with Thomas Amiar at Balance Health Wellness Center. We will also be sending a post email after this, um, session and a recording of the session too. Thank you for, thank you for joining us all. Thank you, Thomas, for sharing the night with everyone energetically and have a good night.
Thank you, good night. Okay, everything good as you wanted?
Yeah.
Thank you, Monica, bye-bye.